I call to order this April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Borough Council meeting will begin with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance to the flag led by councillor Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this evening's moment of silence, I would just ask that everybody rise and observe the next sixty seconds in silence, reflecting whatever way you feel most appropriate.
We'll take about thirty seconds and then we'll call the roll.
Here.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Mister Hicks?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mister Stube?
Here.
Mayor Schultz?
Here.
And Ms. Fisher?
Here.
Okay, I will first, we have councillor Hicks by video conference. I'll need a motion to permit councillor Hicks to attend by video conference.
So moved.
Motion by the deputy mayor is there, second?
Second.
Second by councillor Stube. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Welcome councillor Hicks officially.
Thank you.
Next presentations, it's my favorite presentation each quarter. Mister Jude with our fiscal status update. Because it's always good news.
Okay, thank you. Thought we'd start off today going a little wild. Normally, we start off with the general fund, and I don't want things to get boring, so enterprise funds. These are our utility accounts. Essentially, every activity that the borough does, any major activity, we track in funds. So our enterprise funds are our water fund, sewer fund, stormwater fund, solid waste fund, and parking fund. Each of those activities are tracked separately with revenues and expenses, so we'll go through those. The first thing that we have to talk about today is our active past due utility accounts. I generally show this first table at the top here during my presentation, which shows the aged accounts by quarter. So this would be the first quarter of each of those years going across the top and the balances that were outstanding. The second line down shows the number of accounts that are at our lean threshold, meaning their balances are high enough that it warrants putting a lean on the property. And then below that is a breakout of the customer type. In general, our rental and residential is typically higher because we have more accounts related to that. Couple of things I'll point out are over the last several, over this quarter and the past, you know, year, we've seen a decrease in aged accounts. There was a rise in two thousand twenty that isn't reflected here due to COVID. After that started, in a moratorium, we put on terminations and late fees. That continued through two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, and now as of the first quarter two thousand twenty-three, we're seeing that downward trend in the first quarter. I will note that from December through February, we had some staffing changes. We also implemented new programs for the trash. So we halted temporarily our termination process. So you'll see that even though our aged accounts are decreasing, the number of accounts are increasing, suggesting that our rental and residential, even though they have smaller balances, the number of accounts have increased. We resumed that in April. And I wanted to demonstrate what going through the termination process and our collection process does. So the bottom of this page is our billing cycle walkthrough. Starting on the left, it shows what a typical balance outstanding for all, the billing cycle would be the day after we bill it. The next one over is if people were to make payments up to the point of the due date, this is what was remaining, and this is an actual cycle. So as of the due date, we had one hundred and sixty-eight thousand outstanding. Then we send out a courtesy reminder letter to properties, letting them know that they missed their due date and seeking, you know, that they make a payment. After that, the balance dropped down to thirty-six thousand. Then the next step of the process is a thirteen day notice where we go out to the properties. We hang a notice on the door, letting them know that they missed their due date. And if they don't pay within thirteen days, then we'll terminate water at the property. So after that thirteen day notice, the amount outstanding dropped to twelve thousand, and then at termination, we had it drop down to eight thousand. Typically, you know, we offer flexible payment agreements. There are people who are on assistance programs that we offer. So getting that to zero is unlikely because we are providing these additional avenues for them to make payments as they're able. But you can see the decrease that, you know, from fourteen hundred accounts down to twenty-one is good once we go through this process. Okay, so the first fund we'll look at is our water fund. Water, stormwater and sewer are all very similar. The way these are accounted for with revenue, typically the revenue we generate in the first couple of months of the year gets put back into the previous year because that's when the water usage occurred. And when residents make payment, they have time to make payment and we bill them, then that revenue goes back into the proper year. So typically what we'll see with the water fund and then later the sewer fund is revenue will be lower than twenty-five percent because we won't start collecting that revenue until later in the year for the usage in that first quarter. Actual expenses are slightly elevated. You can see our capital expenditures at this point are one point nine million. We've had some significant work done on some of our water capital projects that didn't occur in the first quarter of the previous years. Also wanted to point out that charges for services under revenue, well, that'll increase later in the year, but the other revenue right below that has a slight decrease. And in two thousand twenty-two, we saw a increase in the number of construction projects that were tapping into our line out at the Tiff site and other sites where development was occurring. As they connect to our lines, they pay a fee, and we were able to recognize that revenue in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. Our stormwater fund is performing in terms of expenditures consistent with prior year, we're at about twelve percent. That will, similar to water and sewer, the revenue will come in more robustly later in the year. We're showing an eight percent revenue as percent of, compared to what we expect to receive with our budget. Sewer fund, actual expenses are at ten percent of the budget. We're seeing slightly decrease in capital expenditures as we focus on our water side of things, so that is driving some of the lower expenses at this point. We do have some robust projects later in the year, so being at ten percent is well within expectation. Our revenue is six percent of budget. It's slightly lower again due to other revenue. That other revenue line has tipping fees for sewer, just like water. People in two thousand twenty-two were connecting to our sewer lines, and we're not seeing that same level activity in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. Our solid waste fund had a significant change this year with our new contract. We ended up making this primarily an in and out fund where we collect trash collection fees and we pass those fees directly onto our vendor. So typically, our expectation is that these will net out to zero. You'll see at this point, our expenses are slightly higher. The borough is currently offering and has offered a buyback program for last year's expired trash bags and tags. So that difference of nine thousand represents essentially the buyback of those tags. So there's that discrepancy there. I did want to point out, one of the processes that we're going through this year is taking a look at the trash program and determining what, if anything, we can do to make changes to that, whether that's, you know, bring it in-house. One of the things we have to do is get good data. So we just paid for our first quarter trash fee for this year, and that told us that there were about five thousand nine hundred and eighty-three residential units that we are, that are participating in our trash program. So we'll continue to evaluate that as we go, but that has been pretty consistent throughout this first quarter. We also saw six thousand and six hundred and thirty trash tags sold. That is tags that people can use to put out additional bags exceeding the one bag a week that they get. We saw in the end of December, beginning of January, that tag sales were high. That's starting to taper off as we got into March. I think people were getting a better understanding of our program, that they can put out one bag without tags. So I'll be interested to see how the second quarter looks and if that continues to decline. Our parking fund is, you know, consistent with prior years. It's meeting expectations. If you look across the top, our supply services and utilities has kind of tapered off compared to previous years. And that's how, due to timing of when we make payments to our outside agencies and partners. Our revenues are consistent at twenty-four percent, and we continue to monitor our parking meters. You know, right now, we're seeing issues with some of the meters as we come, approach the end of their useful life. So we're doing an evaluation of repairs or replacement and developing a program for that. The general fund, this is the fund that captures basically everything that doesn't get reported in those other funds. So, you know, it's meeting expectations. We're at seventeen percent of expected budget. The general fund is primarily funded by taxes, and those taxes for real estate went out in March, and we are collecting those. We'll expect the second quarter to get the majority of those taxes, tax revenue in. Licenses and permits, I wanted to point out here, showing it's consistent. Last year, it was much higher as building and construction went on. We sold more permits. That has tapered off in two thousand twenty-three, being replaced by revenue for our rental inspection program. So it's kind of offsetting that, not to suggest that our permits have maintained that level of activity we saw last year. And this is a summary, just showing all the funds with the third, the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. In short, everything is looking well on track. Any questions?
See, I said it's always good news. Thank you, Richard. Are there, are there any questions?
I just had a question just for a time. When, I know that we're forever in the budget cycle, as you're showing, but for the CDBG funds, when do we start planning those out?
That actually, you'll have a public hearing in May. So the program year two thousand twenty-three is already being drafted between the manager's office and the redevelopment authority staff, and that, so you'll receive the information on that during the public hearing process.
So I guess, I guess my one question about that is that it usually comes to us, and, you know, I don't feel like, you know, taking all the time and effort that has been put into it, but it is sort of, I think, a fund that we have a little bit more flexibility on. And I know that, I think councillor Stube had put as one of our council roles is like participatory budgeting, and I just, you know, I feel like maybe that's one of the areas that we haven't looked at. New opportunities, as in with council, it's more of something that comes to us. So I'm just, I just wasn't sure if there's more opportunity to sort of look at it before it comes for our, do you know what I mean? Certainly.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, you go ahead.
So before it comes to council, there is a public hearing as well that redevelopment authority has, and they put out an application to agencies and people that are interested in applying for the, for assistance, either at the county level, because the county gets their allotment of CDBG as well as the borough. So they'll put those applications out and they vet those internally as our CDBG administrators, and then we have discussions at the staff level. But there's always certainly room for improvement in that. There are also the opportunities that we will have on expended funds from budget activities that as a need arises within the community, that council sees a need, and if it's eligible, you have the ability at any time during that program year to reprogram on expended funds as well from prior years.
Yeah, I was just going to note also, I mean, there are regulations that go along with those funds, so to the extent we do any participatory budgeting, I would say there's going to need to be some education of what we can, can and can't do on that, where if we're done through the general fund, although then we're using direct, well, tax dollars, but could come from permits and licenses, et cetera, I suppose. Probably not, but then you'd be tapping into tax dollars for that participatory budgeting. That might be more appropriate if you're saying, here, we're collecting your, your funds, and we're going to give you, you know, some, some control, direct control.
I guess the, yeah, and when I say participatory budgeting, it doesn't mean the entire budget, right? But like just looking at opportunities, and I guess I think of CDBG as it's already in a particular area, and yes, there are things that are attached to where it can be spent, but also it is impacting a certain community. And so, you know, thinking of, yes, we think of the community, but also getting that view sometimes of maybe there's something that we are missing and that we could have opportunities. So that's where I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel on the whole budget, but if there are things that maybe come to us, is there some space to work with that fund, that fund to see where we can ensure that we're, you know, allocating things that are impact, of course, it's impactful, but you know, you know what I mean? Like sometimes things do change over time, and just make sure that we have that opportunity.
Just, just add on to that, when I brought that up, I think I was kind of envisioning it more being out of the general fund, but, but it just being like a set portion as, like a pilot program more or less, just to see how it would operate and then potentially expanding it down the road based on that. So it's kind of, at least initially how I'd envisioned it.
Sort of like outside agencies, you take, take a dollar amount that we're going to fund in a certain way and give, really in that sense, give, give the public the input on, on how that's, how that's being utilized. Yeah, okay. Any, any questions for Richard?
I just had a quick one. You mentioned the parking fund and some of our meters coming to the end of their, their life. When we, when you take up that research, would you be able to present to council, would there be a menu of options? Like are we, can we see how much a kiosk system would cost and updating apps and things like that?
Yeah, currently, the assistant manager and I met with a number of organizations ranging from, you know, the, the single meter that we have to a meter that does, you know, two. And then also, we have seen a number of kiosks. So yes, that is something we can certainly do.
Great, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you, Richard. Next is an opportunity for citizens, visitors to be heard. We had no, no scheduled speakers this evening, but if you have anything here in the audience or by Zoom that you would like to comment on, please come to the podium. You're on your way. I need your, your name, name and address for the record.
My, my name's Mitch Schahels, and I live at six twenty-four West Lowther. And I just wanted to, uh, just voice support for the Noble Street bike lane and then the Bedford Street plan. And I also wanted to voice support for the point that deputy mayor, deputy mayor Landis brought up last week about sort of hardening that bike lane and putting in concrete instead of the pylons, at least maybe just at the intersection, because it's sort of like an area that can be, you know, accidents have happened there. I was actually just on Noble Street and almost got in a bike accident there, like right before this meeting. So I'm very thankful that the borough is pursuing this. And I guess I had one question regarding the Bedford Street plan for the diagonal parking lanes or the parking spaces. What, what is the length of those spaces and will they be like long enough to accommodate like a pickup truck with an extended cab without it sort of poking out into the bike lane or back over and blocking the, the crosswalk? So that's, yeah, that's all.
So just a reminder that the, the proposed diagonal parking on Bedford was phase two as opposed to the initial project. But that is approximately twenty feet in length, which is, should be more than sufficient.
And I, and I know there was, not to put anybody on the spot, there was a post-meeting discussion among staff about the concrete on Noble Boulevard and seems feasible. Is that fair to say?
We are actually exploring several options to bring back before council, and we'll be planning to do that at the main meeting.
Thanks again, Mitch. More, more to come on that one especially. Thank you.
And I did ask a question similar about the backend parking for future, and I, I think that my, my statement was about maybe making sure that there was a, that a parking space is boxed in so that the car can also see that there are wheels or maybe, I don't know if that's completely possible, but because I have seen the rear, the backend parking and people are out into the road, but if there's a delineated line, it's, it's more obvious for them to actually know, you know, where the boundary is and why. But that was something that I've also discussed.
Thank you. Any, anybody else here in Borough Hall? Anybody by Zoom? Is councillor Hicks our only attendee by Zoom? Is councillor Hicks our only attendee by Zoom at this point? Do we have, do we have others?
He is on Zoom.
But he's, he's the only one on Zoom?
No one else is.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Just gives me an idea of what to, what to expect later on, later on, although that could change, right? Somebody could, could log in, I suppose. Next is the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted upon by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Is council requesting any such item be, be removed? Is there any such request from the public? Okay, then I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by deputy mayor is there, second?
Second.
Second by councillor Mellon. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So that approves the entire consent agenda and will move on to the regular agenda. There are no table continued and recurring items. Reports from elected officials, we have a proclamation that, that I'll be signing in moments after the meeting that councillor Cramsey brought, brought to my attention. So I'm going to pitch it to councillor Cramsey.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to express my appreciation for you taking on this proclamation. So April, and specifically April twenty-eighth of every year is workers' memorial day. And I thought it was important to do this proclamation because we are blessed here in the borough to have a great staff. And basically, the thought of workers' memorial day is honoring those who have been injured, have had a hardship or who have passed away on the job or in the line of duty. I, I do think in my time here, we've been fairly lucky, and I think that's a testament to all of our staff here and the leadership we have. And, and I always appreciate when Susan sends us an email or, or a video of our staff, you know, getting more training, getting new training, getting CPR training. It really shows how lucky we are in the borough. So I think it's important that we, you know, take a moment on, on this day and the twenty-eighth to, to one, think about how lucky we are, but also honor, you know, the, the work that our workers do and hope that, that, that safety continues. And there's probably larger discussions at the state and federal level on making more protections for our workers, but I thought this was an important proclamation, so I wanted to thank you.
Thank, thank you for bringing it forward. Next, reports from, from committees, ERCP.
Thank you. I have one item this evening. I make the motion that Borough Council appoint Michael Shanaman to a partial term as an alternate on the Human Relations Commission. The term will become effective immediately and will expire on February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
It's a motion by the deputy mayor to appoint Michael Shanaman to a partial term as an alternate on the Human Relations Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Mellon. Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to point out that following the town hall, Mister Shanaman had, I, I talked with him after the town hall, and he kind of asked how he could get involved in helping the borough. I brought up looking at the board and commission openings we have, and I'm kind of glad to see that he decided to apply, and obviously, that's an example of the town hall as being successful, I would say. So hopefully, we have more of that as we move forward.
And I believe you also took some extra time and met with.
Yeah, yeah, he and I met after the meeting.
So, so really, this, I just made the motion. Did all the work on this one, and so you get the credit. Good job.
Thank you all for your, your motion, your second, and for the work beforehand. Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and motion passes.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. Parks and Rec.
All right, I have a number of items. First, I move that council enact an ordinance authorizing the lease proportions of the Stewart Community Center.
There's a motion by councillor Mellon to enact the ordinance authorizing lease portions Stewart Community Center. Is there a second? Oh, that's me. I'm sorry. I'll second that motion. This is a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please the roll.
Mister Cramsey?
Aye.
Mister Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mister Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, next, I move that council approve a lease and a stipulation against liens agreement between the Borough of Carlisle and DG Foundation's Learning Park LLC to lease a portion of the second floor and courtyard at the Stewart Community Center for the purpose of a childcare facility.
Councillor, councillor Mellon moves to approve the lease and stipulation against liens regarding the lease of the Stewart Community Center for the childcare facility. I will second that motion. Is there any discussion?
Mister Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to amend the conditions of the lease as follows. I move that we consider changing paragraph seven of the lease conditions where it says lesser shall provide four window unit air conditioners for the lessee. Two, lesser shall provide adequate space heating and cooling for the lessee.
And is, is that the only amendment?
That's the only amendment I would have as considered.
Okay. Does councillor Mellon consider that a friendly amendment to incorporate into the motion? Okay. And is there any, any need to discuss that further with staff? I mean, it just broadens the, the opportunities for cooling and heating. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Just gives more options, really. Okay, yep. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Okay, next, I have a few items regarding the Cumberland Youth Cycling Development Pump Track approvals. First, I move that council reject all bids received on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three by the Cumberland Youth Cycling Development for the Valley Meadow. By the Cumberland Youth Cycling Development for the Valley Meadows Bicycle Pump Track.
Uh, motion by Counselor Mellon for rejection of bids on the Valley Meadows Bicycle Pump Track. I will second that, that motion. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Okay, next I move that council approve Cumberland Youth Cycling Development's revised project scope and design for the Valley Meadows Bicycle Pump Track. Based on the satisfactory review and approval by the borough solicitor. And further that council approve Cumberland Youth Cycling Development's use of the Keystone Purchasing Network, KPN. For engaging services for the Valley Meadows Bicycle Pump Track.
Um, further motions on the pump track by Counselor Mellon, I will second, second that motion. Um, before I, before I call the question, I know Jonathan, you're here and other, other members. Would you like to, to address the updates at all? If not, we'll. Okay, great. Is there any discussion, any questions? No, just clear, clear to us. Yeah, alright, thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Okay, and finally I move that council consider authorizing the Carlisle Kiwanis Club to enter into a contract with Safety Turf Inc. To furnish and install a port-in-place playground surface at the Fort Latort Playground at Latort Park. The Carlisle Kiwanis Club has provided the necessary documents to show proof of sufficient funds to pay contractors and all labor and materials necessary for the project.
Hey, I will second Counselor Mellon's motion to authorize Carlisle Kiwanis Club to enter in the contract with Safety Turf Incorporated. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? I know we had um, some, some comment previously. But does, does the Kiwanis Club want, want to, want to address this? Do we have a representative?
I'm happy to answer any questions when we have a project. As far as.
Sure, yeah, take the, the mic and your, your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing? Good to see everybody again. Last time actually we met, we were about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars short of our fundraising budget. Um, I'm happy to be here today to announce that we have raised enough funds to complete the entire project. Um, including demolition, equipment, rebuild, and of course the port in place, which is the subject of this evening's conversation. Um, one of the elements of the port in place. Rubber surfacing is the ADA component to it, which is it provides an additional level of accessibility for people with disability. Um, this playground wasn't designed specifically for ADA, but it exceeds all ADA components, um, the way it's designed and will be built. Um, I think it is an important portion of the overall uh, design and build. I think it's a great element to the community. I think it's a huge cost savings to the borough itself. I anticipate that the upkeep and maintenance of any alternatives being. Mulch, wood carpet, et cetera, would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars spread over thirty years. Whereas we're willing to pay the hundred and fifty thousand dollars upfront for the port in place rubber surfacing today. Other than that, I'm not a port in place person. I'm also not a playground person, but happy to answer any questions about the project itself. Um, like I said, I'm excited to be here today.
Thank, thank you. Um, are there, are there any questions at this stage? I know Tamla, you, you, you provided some comment. Would you, would you like to provide some additional comment at, at the top what you provided in advan- in advance? Yeah, if you, if you're gonna say anything, you'll need to come up to the podium. We'll need, uh, we know who you are, but you need to provide your name and address for the record.
I'm Tamla Trussell and I'm a resident of Carlisle and I'm representing Move Past Plastic. Um, I brought up the concern for putting in port in place to the council about a week ago. Unfortunately, I just found out about it and I really apologize so much for the late notice. It like crushes me. But um, I do appreciate you reading the information and considering it. Um, the EPA and the Consumer Product Safety uh, Commission do not um, any longer support. The safety claims that artificial turf brings to bear. It is an unregulated, whether it's any kind of artificial turf, tire crumb, or anything that's made of it. It is not a regulated product and um, there's no third-party testing to verify its safety. So that is something very, very important to understand. There are extremely hazardous chemicals in it. It's CDC has cited it as the seventh most prevalent exposure for youth for lead poisoning. PFOs are in it, um, very many hazardous carcinogens. These really, really impact women who are pregnant and babies and youth. These chemicals are very toxic. They also shed these chemicals, absorb herbicides, pesticides, fungicides. They shed microplastics um, into our streams and contaminants that can hurt our prized Latort Creek. And the um, the animals and plants within it. Um, the, the artificial turf can get up to a hundred and fifty degrees. Now it is surrounded by shade trees, so that should not happen. However, it could easily exceed fifteen to thirty degrees hotter than it would. If it had um, a, a wood mulch. And um, it also can get, if it's not cleaned regularly, it can harbor. Um, bacteria, um, viruses, fungus, um, it's been known, it's been known to pass on MRSA. Which is a very concerning disease and other things. Um, personally, I have had three children who are now um, turning twenty-three, twenty-five and twenty-six. But we went to Latort all the time and it was a magic place. Oh my gosh, we loved it. Now, why did we love it? Because it was wooden and it was this maze and it was like in nature, under these beautiful trees. If it becomes a plastic world, I would have not wanted to patronize it with my children. I think if you look at the playground equipment that is made of plastic and has plastic surfacing. You will find that there's not as many children playing it and enjoying in it. It's not nearly as fun. I do think that we can get ADA compliance into the park without doing a poured surface. Um, there's so much to cover, but I don't want to take all night and I do want to leave room for questions. Um, the organically managed, of course, natural grass and engineered wood fiber are the best alternative. To um, so that you don't bring in, I know that the old. Uh, wood had, you know, some toxins in it. Newer stuff does not. Um, so that's my recommendation as far as what to, what to put in. Um, so. Anyone have questions?
And Tamla, I don't, I don't expect you to be a port in place expert either. Um, uh, we, staff was good enough on pretty short notice to try to pull together some studies. Um, and, and it appears that with port in place and the bonding that, that, that um, there's a. Pretty good extent of mitigation of, of the, of the, the chemicals that may um, uh, be. Uh, uh, what the right word might be, excreted from the, from the port in place. As opposed to the turf material that's through that crumb type of, I mean, I know what that's like. I've been on turf, turf fields before. Um, so there, there is, you know, we, we're balancing that with ADA issues. And I, you, you said, you, you, you think that they're ADA compliant materials. Obviously the wood mulch. Is, 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 is a difficulty for somebody who may have.
So, so you know, they have, they have, um, uh, you go to wetlands and everything and there's wood, wood planking down. And bicycles and wheelchairs and everything gets through it. So I think that's something that could be, you know, put down. And um, used and uh, it would, you could get the access to the swings or to the slide. Or, you know, uh, the parts that, you know, the child would need to get access to. Uh, I do think that that's an important consideration, but I do think that's possible doing that. As far as them putting a sealant, we all know that sealant is going to be exposed to weathering. And even in with the tree cover, canopy cover, solar radiation, which breaks down. And my question is, is what is that sealant made out of? So PFOs is, is a chemical that res- resists heat, oil and water. Is, is PFOs what's covering it to create that sealant? Um, and if not, what other substance and, and what is its warranty and its promise? Also disposal of anything that's created from this type of um, uh, recycled tire material. There is no recycling it. It is just going to, literally they found it in. US deserts and just thrown. There's no place for it. It is a inherently toxic substance. So I don't think it is a um, a good thing to, to install. To create more of a plastic world than we're already subjected to. Thirty percent of your dust already that you breathe is plastic. And to have more plastic exposure and the chemicals from it, I just don't see that it's worth it. All over the country, from DC, California, everyone is banning it, ripping it out. There are lawsuits that are happening. I would want you guys to just try and avoid. Um, the, I, I was just on a um, uh, webinar today. Uh, with uh, pediatric um, doctors, physicians. And they were talking about artificial turf and it is absolutely something that they do not want put down. And children to be, and, and new mothers, uh, pregnant moms to be exposed to. Um, I asked that of them and if they had, you know, anything and they um, gave me some more uh, things. And some, um, I've had several other meetings today about it and I've got more resources too that I can provide from other organizations.
And I, and I didn't say this before, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry that, that we weren't able, this didn't get on your radar sooner too.
So sorry.
Yeah, no, it's not your fault. I mean, that's, you know, obviously the, the issues here weren't communicated perhaps well, well enough. Um, and back a year ago, um, so you shouldn't need to apologize for that at all. Uh, are there, I, I have another question, but are there any other questions of Tamla on, on this? Oh, you were leaning in.
Just a general question on. Uh, timeline, um, and how this water would not impact that.
That, that was my question too. I wanted to make sure that was, that was clear. I'm not sure who's best to, to answer. If we were to hold off on the port in, in place at this stage and, and look at other alternatives, what, what impact that would have on, on your timeline?
So, um, as we stand right now.
I'm sorry, you, you have to trade because ca- at least Counselor Hicks would not be able to hear you.
Um, as it stands right now, uh, we are hoping to begin construction on the existing structure on May first. Um, I would imagine it would have some impact on our timetable. Um, technically. We have a contract in place with Playworld Alien Associates and Willow, which is the playground builder. Um, and I believe obviously, you know, anything can be done um, as far as timetables, but. We're, we were hoping to begin.
Is, is, and I, I'm, I'm trying, you, you may not know all the details of the contract. I just want to make sure that. If it could be delayed a month so we could further consider things, is that going to potentially impact? A required commencement date under the contract could then impact um, the, the expense of that contract?
The expense would be considerable. Um, it'd probably be somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars, um, being that I have about three hundred thousand dollars in playground equipment. Being delivered on May fifteenth to that address. So we would have to look at a storage component, which would be about three trailers.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I, I, I have a quick question, miss. Um, I was just curious if the decision to go with a port in place was. Um, largely an issue of cost savings versus other options? And were there actually other sort of more natural options that were not considered? Um, yeah, thanks.
So, um, I'll, I'll try to answer that on behalf of just a general resident, neighbor and, and friend. Um, not being a playground expert, we had multiple conversations dating back all the way to the fall of twenty nineteen. In which we had walked the existing uh, Fort Latort Playground uh, multiple times, looking at what kind of servicing. Is currently in place and what the ongoing maintenance expenditures, including time, money and, and effort from, from the borough. Um, is going into and taking away from other resources. Uh, we had multiple conversations with Parks and Rec as to. Lack of a better term, there's a lot of swampy areas in the existing playground right now. Um, if we were to try to replicate what we have as far as the wood carpet, which would be a base layer of crushed stone. Um, followed by just an enormous amount of mulch. Um, we would encounter at some point in time in the near future, consistent ongoing maintenance that would be required for this, for the base. About, we'll say this base specifically, which would be mostly mulch. Um, as far as other organics, I do want to make sure that we're talking about um, two separate elements as far as. What a port in place epoxy sealed rubber surfaces in comparison to a field with chip tires and, and recycled materials. That actually can, can come up in your hand. Uh, they use an aromatic binder. Um, I'm not aware of PFOs being. Used to seal anything. Um, I do understand and absolutely hear your concerns and we certainly don't want to, to go down a path that we would have any regret about. Um, so as far as the timeline is concerned, I would hope that we would be able to move forward with the existing one out of just general fear for. The sheer amount of equipment that's being delivered next month. Um, but I'm open to suggestion.
Okay, I think I can say that costs, uh, maintenance costs uh, in particular might have been a driving factor to, to that. Um, is that, is that adequate?
I would say so, uh, yes.
I would also, I would also add the ADA component.
Yeah, that was our, that was our first choice, obviously, was ADA followed by costs.
You, uh, I'll just, thank you. Um, and that makes sense. Um, you, you did mention, I don't know if I got the numbers right, that the increase in. Maintenance cost over, I thought I heard you say thirty years would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, which is about five thousand dollars, that quick math, uh, five thousand dollars a year. Um, potentially uh, for an alternative. Did, did I hear that accurately?
I'm using rough numbers as to the total cost of the port in place rubber surfacing and what the ongoing maintenance would be for a wood carpet. I believe it's called wood carpet, which is just mulch. Um, to have the maintenance from the borough go out to re-mulch the. The area every year.
Okay, and that, that would be about a five thousand dollar a year increase roughly?
I'm, I apologize, I do not know the exact numbers. It's eleven thousand square feet. Um, if you multiply that by the cost of mulch, it could be up to that amount.
Thank, thank you, that, that's helpful. I, I'll just add that I, I've seen these um, in, in a lot of parks in urban areas. Um, and perhaps technology's come a long way, ceilings have gotten better. Um, I have yet to be in one of these where there was not pebbles. The little rubber things do come off. Uh, it's not like an astroturf. But um, that will happen. There will be some residual uh, material floating around. And um, I'm not sure what, how many times we would need to reseal it or, or do that. But um, that, that's just something to consider, I think.
Um, and then typically seven to eight years is the lifespan for this. I don't know if you got a different quote. They might have gone as much as eight to ten, but um. There's always problems when you, when you put this in and it'll get, it'll get divots too, which will cause more like wear and tear on it. Um, and then just simply little kids play with the mulch. I mean, it's just good fun. And everyone does it. Um, and yes, you, you are gonna have that, that breaking down. And it does need to be cleaned and I don't know if you put that in your cost, in your cost structure. But you're going to have to disinfect it and clean it regularly. And then of course, that's gonna create. The cleaning itself will. will create more weathering and breakage of that epoxy bond. So it's like a catch twenty-two. So you're cleaning it so your kids don't get MRSA and other diseases, and also plastics absorb every, everything. They're lipophilic, they absorb pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, uh, uh, any, anything that's gonna be around there.
Can, can wood chips also absorb and, and be conveyors of-
It, it does, but you know, microbes are a beautiful thing, and they do, you know, a nice job of breaking down stuff too. Um, but yeah, yeah, there, there, there are some, some, um, you know, I, I think I gave you guys a URL that, that took you to all the different types of surfaces you could go to, and so you could look at those pros and cons.
Yeah, and Tamla, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure we're getting sort of an even take on, uh, objective.
No, and that's why I gave that to you, so you would get an even take.
Yeah, thank you. Um, any other questions?
I, I have a question for Andrea. Um, we have Port in Place coming in another park, correct?
Yes.
And so, I mean, I, I guess that evaluation is, I mean, it's, I don't think it's as large of a footprint, but it, do you know if it's the same company or any, any other uh, comparisons? So I guess, I'm just trying to get some context.
Yeah, it was, I, it's um, the contractor for uh, Fairground Linear Park is Landserve, so it's their subcontractor. So I don't have any specific information about what actual surface, what company they're using. But yeah, that is um, in the works for the playground area there.
And, and sorry, one last thing. So currently, uh, Latort doesn't, it is not ADA compliant tech, or I don't, I don't know what the evaluation process is. So I just, I'm trying to understand the, the difference. Cause we are using the um, the E, the wood chips, the E W H, whatever you guess.
Yeah, we are using wood carpet in all of our nine playgrounds that we have now.
Okay.
Um, DCNR has funded some of those playgrounds. Um, I, I wouldn't say it's not ADA compliant, but it's not as compatible for people, for children with mobility issues or in a wheelchair. But they have approved wood chips, and they have approved Port in Place both.
Any other questions?
Um, well, I would just like to say, um, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Um, I did read um, everything that you provided, as well as the research that um, staff presented to us. Um, and there seems to not be um, as much certainty about some of the, um, the claims that you've made here tonight than, than I, I feel like you are, are stating. Um, so I would say that we have the, the cost considerations, the ADA considerations. We also have a consideration of timeline in the sense that any delay of the Fort Latort project could potentially impact our Parks and Recreation programs that would be taking place in Latort Park this summer. Um, so I would urge counsel to not put this off any longer.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just have one quick question. To that note, putting down the um, wood chips uh, would be quick and probably take less time than the port in place, and then it wouldn't take that long to then put it in for the ADA compliance boards um, shortly thereafter. But the, the surface could be put in very quickly to, in order to install the equipment that's been purchased.
I, and, and uh, just to comment on, on that. Um, and I would invite all council members to give me some sense of, of where we're headed on this, because if it's gonna be a close vote, I might, I might need a roll call on it. Um, but what I, I don't have a good sense of is, uh, one, if we do, if we go that, that route, where we just put the wood chips in sort of short term, obviously, we're increasing a budget in some way. Even if in the short term, the wood chips are less expensive than the port in place, we don't know what the alternative, the expense of the alternative may be. And I, I'm not sure how up against your butt-
I thought he said it was one thirty, and the port in place was one fifty, and thirty years was one thirty, I thought.
I hadn't completed my thought yet, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, so I don't know what the alternative cost may be and how that increases, increases the, the, the budget um, for, for Kiwanis. Um, so that's, that's an unknown, right? Um, two, it's, it's not clear to me yet that, that wood planking is, is appropriate ADA accessibility. I don't, I don't know if that's something that could be addressed here tonight.
Um, I'm not sure if wood planking's ADA or not, but if you put wood planking in the park design, there are fall height, there's, you know, um, things that would need to be considered when kids are climbing on the, the place structures. If they were to fall, they could hit their head on the wood planking. So I'm, that, that would take a lot, you know, a lot of study and a lot of time to make sure if that would even be possible to put wood planking in through the, the play equipment itself.
Right, that was good, that, that anticipated my next question, so that's, that's perfect. Uh, so I, you know, I'm in, I'm inclined, I, I, I don't like PFOS. You know, we've, we've talked at some length about that. Um, I detest it, I grew up in an area that had wells that were horribly um, had, had hor- horrible concentrations of, of PFOS, and I don't know what that's going to do to me during my lifetime. Um, it wasn't Camp Lejeune High, but it was, it was sixteen hundred parts per trillion high. Um, so it's, it's obviously a very, very deep concern for me. I'm not seeing anything in the studies that, that, that makes this, this a, a very grave concern. I would have preferred having more time to sort of work, work through this. And I know, again, not your fault. Um, more, you know, we, we need to be sort of assessing this, these things in this way, obviously, earlier in the process than we have. Um, any other discussion, comments? Okay. I'm going to, I, it's been a while, there was a motion, there was a second, okay. Um, I'm going to call the question, hearing no further, no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, your contract has been, been approved. Um, next is public safety. I move that council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle, adopted by ordinance twenty thirty-two, and thereafter amended with respect to chapter two forty-four vehicles and traffic, to add one on-street handicap parking space located at one thirty-one East Lowther Street, and remove five on-street handicap parking spaces individually located at five twelve North Pitt Street, one forty-nine East Lowther Street, forty-five East South Street, one seventy East North Street, and one forty-seven North Bedford Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hicks, any discussion? I'll call the question, and this is a roll call, Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye. The motion passes. Next, I move the council approve a special events application by Downtown Carlisle Association to lift the sidewalk ordinance and allow all downtown merchants in the C one district to hold sidewalk sale days. The events are to occur, to occur on May thirteenth, June tenth, and July eighth, two thousand twenty-three, from nine AM to nine PM. Approval of this subject to receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hicks, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, motion passes. Next, I move the council approve a special events application, street closure for an end of the school year block party and movie night on June third, two thousand twenty-three, from three o'clock PM to ten o'clock PM. The event is to take place at Memorial Park and on the one hundred block of West Penn Street. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured, and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hicks, any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes. I next move that council approve a special events application, there's a theme, a special events application for the Hope Station Juneteenth Celebration to be held on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. The event is to take place on the first block of West High Street from twelve noon to five PM. Approval is contingent upon PennDOT approval, the receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured, and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with these events. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hicks, this is not your, your send-off in, in June, is it?
It will be.
Is there any discussion?
Um, yeah, I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay, under, understood. Abstention due, due to the prior, being prior to the, to the, uh, to the send-off in June, right? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed, say nay, the motion passes with Counsel Perry's abstention. Next, I move that council, and finally, I move that council approve the purchase of two thou- two two thousand twenty-three Ford Police Interceptor Utility Hybrid Vehicles through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program vendor, New Holland Auto Group. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hicks, there's a, there's a long delay, you've gotten further from us. Uh, it's second by Counsel Hicks, is there any discussion on this item? Excited, excited that we'll have more hybrid vehicles in our, in our fleet. Any further discussion?
No, I just want to e- echo that, that point, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I mean, this is reflective of the fact that, um, you know, we could purchase any vehicle, but we're conscious of our footprint. Um, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we'll have even better options uh, a year or two from now, uh, maybe go all, all-electric, but hybrids are definitely a step in, in the right direction in, in reducing our, our footprint. So I applaud that decision, thanks.
Thank, thank you. And it was noted in our, in our briefing that, that Ford will be offering full-electric perhaps as early as twenty twenty-four, so as we get close to that, we'll want to check that market, see if, maybe we want to extend some vehicles a little further to, to get to a point where we could go all-electric. Um, hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes. That concludes my report, Public Works, Counsel Perry.
Um, I make a motion um, that Borough award the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty-three curb and pedestrian ramp rehabilitation project to the lowest responsive bidder, Porter Construction LLC of Mount Holly Springs, Pennsylvania, in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand twenty-eight dollars. Borough council may also authorize any contract change orders needing prompt action in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars to be approved at the discretion of, of the Borough Manager and brought before council for retroactive approval.
Motion by Counsel Perry for the award of the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty-three curb and pedestrian ramp rehabilitation project, along with authorization uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars uh, for any change orders uh, to be, to be approved by the mer- Borough Manager after retroact- given retroactive later approval. Is there a second? Second. Second by Counsel Stube, is there any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes.
Okay, next, I make a motion that Borough award the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty-three street milling and paving project to the lowest responsive bidder, Pennsy Supply Incorporated of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred and three dollars and thirty cents.
Motion by Counsel Perry for the unit price construction contract for the two thousand twenty-three street milling and paving project. People have been pleading to have our streets repaved, and here it comes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes.
Okay, um, I make a motion for counsel to approve a unit price construction contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC of Center Valley, Pennsylvania, for the twenty twenty-three street maintenance program in the amount of nine dollars and thirty, nine dollars thirty-nine cents per square yard of applied surface under the cap called twenty twenty-three Ultra Thin Bonded Wearing Course Application Contract.
Uh, the motion by Counsel Perry to approve the unit price con- construction contract with two thousand twenty-three street maintenance program, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes.
Okay, um, so I make a motion for Borough to approve a unit price construction contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC of Center Valley, Pennsylvania, for the twenty twenty-three street maintenance program in the amount of three dollars fifty-four cents per square yard of applied surface under the cap called twenty twenty-three Micro Surfing Contract.
Counsel Perry makes a, a motion to approve a unit price construction contract, excuse me, um, for the contract for the two thousand twenty-three street maintenance program. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes.
Okay, um, so I make a motion for Borough Council to award the Ridge Street Pumping Station Improvements General Construction Contract to the lowest responsive bidder, PSI Pumping Solutions Incorporated of York Springs, PA, for the lump sum amount of four hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, and the Ridge Street Pumping Station Improvements Electrical Construction Contract to the lowest responsive bidder, WY Electric LLC of Littlestown, PA, for the lump sum amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars, pending the receipt of the required bonds and insurances for the project.
Motion by Counsel Perry for the award of the contracts necessary for the Ridge Street Pumping Station Improvements, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the mo- the motion passes.
Okay, and lastly, I make a motion for council to authorize any contract change order needing prompt action in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars each to be approved at the discretion of the Borough Manager and brought before council for retroactive approval.
And to, to clarify this, the additional approval for the, for the prior, uh, the prior vote, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube, is there any further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and the motion passes. And that, that concludes Contract Night, Counsel Perry.
Yes, it does.
Um, sustainability and community planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one, one item this evening. Uh, I move that Borough Council, um, waive all requirements of the Borough's subdivision and land development ordinance associated with the ninety-day conditional approval deadline for Hamilton Commons LLC that expired on August fourth, twenty twenty-two, and extend the land development plan deadline to June eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Counsel Hicks to waive the requirements to Borough's subdivision land development ordinance associated with the ninety-day conditional approval for Hamilton Common, Commons LLC, uh, and extend the land development plan to June eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion passes.
That concludes my report, thanks.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Hicks. Um, next, new, new business, this is another opportunity for any citizens to be heard on any matter relating to Borough Government. Is there anybody who would like to be heard any further? Okay, let's see, it's, it's, no one coming forth. Uh, move on to reports from council members and, and staff. Annie, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, things are picking up here at the end of the semester, and I have several updates for us. Um, the next Let's Talk Climate conversation is artistic activism and the climate crisis. It will take place tomorrow, Friday, April fourteenth, at eleven thirty AM in Old House Hall, room oh eight. At this weekend, Dickinson will host Red and White Weekend, as well as an accepted students' open house. There will be hundreds of visitors on campus, and some local businesses will be offering discounts for the visiting families. Also, Dickinson Student Senate will present Festival of the Arts this Saturday, April fifteenth, from one to four PM on the academic quad, and that is open to the public, so we encourage your attendance. Um, there will be a Clark Forum titled Ukraine-Russia War: Reflections After One Year on Tuesday, April eighteenth, at seven PM in the Anita Tuvin Schlechter Auditorium. Dickinson's annual Take Back the Night event to end sexual violence and support survivors will be held in the Allison Great Hall on Wednesday, April nineteenth, at seven PM. The Molly and Wayne Burgess Memorial Lecture will be presented on Monday, April twenty-fourth, at seven PM in the Anita Tuvin Schlechter Auditorium, titled Paradigm Lost: From Two-State Solution to One-State Reality. The lecture will focus on the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. It is co-hosted by St. John's Episcopal Church in Carlisle and Dickinson's Clark Forum for Contemporary Issues. A symposium in honor of Susan Rose, Professor of Sociology at Dickinson since nineteen eighty-four, will take place on Saturday, April twenty-ninth. And include a special film showing and three panel discussions beginning in Althouse Hall, room one oh six. Looking ahead to next month, Dickinson will partner with Palmer's Sneakers and Apparel to offer Dickinson gear in their store. And host a pop-up shop on campus on May fifth. We will also celebrate Dickinson's Class of Twenty Twenty-Three at commencement on Sunday, May twenty-first, at ten AM on the John Dickinson Campus. And lastly, Dickinson Center for Civic Learning and Action will host a year-end celebration on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at five PM in the Hub Social Hall. We invite members of the Borough Council and staff to attend the event. Uh, it will be an opportunity to celebrate the partnerships between Dickinson and the community. As well as the twentieth anniversary of the Borough Ambassador position. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your report, and I have to say, you know, Palmer's Sneaker and Apparel really hit the ground running. There you go. Uh, Council, Council Hicks, do you have anything for us this evening?
Not this evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Council Mellon?
Um, just to stay tuned, once we have this, um, Fort Latort, um. Schedule complete, uh, we'll be notifying the public about the possibility to come pick up the picket that you've had in, um. Uh, in the original fence, and that's tentatively scheduled towards the end of April, on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. So we will advise on social media when folks can come back and get their pickets.
Thanks, thanks for the reminder, Council Stube.
I have nothing for this evening, thank you.
Council Ramsey?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, two quick things as we, uh, are experiencing unseasonably warm weather. Um, it's good to see people out and about, we heard from one of our cyclists, uh, tonight and all the things going on at Dickinson. Um, I'm not sure Stephanie, if this is on Facebook, but if folks, um, drive through the borough, please pay attention. Um, we've seen our neighboring communities just awful tragedies of, of pedestrians getting struck by cars. Um, so it really, um, as more people are out and about, I hope people are, are paying attention and driving safely. Um, and then my second item, um, just wanted to give a shout out to, to Andrew and Parks and Rec, um, their spring, uh, catalog. And going into summer, there's a lot of awesome things. Uh, we had a discussion on, on parks tonight, we have some of the best parks, I think, um, in the area, so, um, good luck with everything and, and you all do a great job. And I saw from the Borough Manager, you all got to play dodgeball, I think, I think, I think staff should have to play council at, at, at some point, so. So hopefully the mayor can make that happen, thanks.
I'm still sore from that.
Might want to, might want to reconsider. Deputy Mayor Landis?
I have nothing, but I do not like dodgeball, so.
Council Perry?
I have nothing, thanks.
Borough Manager, anything from staff? Okay, Solicitor Brenneman, nothing, thank you, and this meeting is adjourned, thank you all.